Calling the pre-meeting to order, it's 8:02. We'll first go over the CRA agenda. Any issues with the consent agenda? Minutes, the storefront assistance program? Would you just briefly explain those two items? The storefront, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but in case we missed something?
Yeah, sure. Good morning. So I received two applications, storefront assistance program applications, from one business owner at 825 Florida Avenue. This is Dr. Khan's medical office, right next to Victoria's House by. He is currently going through the renovation of his building, and you may have noticed he changed the facade from kind of corrugated metal to party board, I think. And so I think he's done a really nice job and painted everything, did the renovations inside. He submitted the information for this assistance program and is requesting the reimbursement of $27,500. Same project, or the next project is located in 511 Ohio Avenue, same application type. The owner is renovating former automobile garage. It used to be Shelton Service Center. Kevin Shelton started the renovation of this building after Hurricane Michael. However, he decided, in the middle of everything, to sell the property to this new owner, and this new owner is finishing up this project, also adding some party board to it, following all the design requirements that we have here for the CRA and the city. And he is requesting the reimbursement of $25,000 for this project. If, just by looking at these projects, they're spending well over $100,000, $200,000 for the renovations. So they do both projects meet the incentive requirements, and my recommendation would be to approve both projects contingent upon project approval. So it's important to me to point out that they should finish these projects, get the certificate of completion issued by the building department, and which is our indication that this project is done and complete, and it meets all of our building code standards, and then we would issue the reimbursement.
How do you determine the reimbursement? I meant the amount.
So this incentive says it's a matching grant, 50/50. So they have to spend at least $50,000 on some improvements of the storefront. So if they change the siding, if they paint the facade, if they add some new windows, doors to it, all of this would be eligible expenses. They have to provide some invoices to my office so that I can see how much money they actually spent on this. They actually did.
Any questions?
Is there a limit on how much we do for the storefront per fiscal year?
I think we have $55,000 in the budget right now for this, but I mean, this is a limit that we set, but we can always adjust it mid-year budget if there's going to be another project, you know, applying for this.
Thanks.
And then is there a limit of how many times a contractor can apply?
Well, the property owner can only apply once, yes.
Any other questions? All right, let's move on to the new business then, discussion of the budget amendment. I'm assuming that you're pretty sure that you're going to get, was it matching funds or was it a grant of this amount?
So this budget amendment is mainly because of the sidewalk project on Tennessee Avenue. This is actually a grant that we received from DOT. It's 100% funded. However, we have to, we have to pay the engineering consultant, the engineering firm first before we can request the money back from DOT. And that's why I'm asking to add this item to the agenda, or to the budget. I'm also adding $2,500 to office supplies since I need a new computer.
Did IT verify that? I'm just kidding.
Actually, it wanted it out.
I want to be a good steward of that money.
They actually wanted it out after four years of service.
Any questions? And then the last item is the improvement to the Union Soldier Park. I was excited to see that. What's the total cost?
We don't even have a cost yet. We're trying to finalize the scope of work. I think this is very, I'm trying to be very mindful with this project. I don't want to change too much at this park because of its heritage, because of its history. At the same time, the park needs an update. We're adding an ADA parking lot, handicap parking lot to the layout. We're adding some sidewalk to this little pocket park. Our intention was to make some improvement, but not to overload. To still keep it open for people, you know, to walk their dogs or to go with their kids to and just let them run around. There will be some lighting added, so it's going to be, you know, well lit in the evening hours as well. Some of the vegetation is just, it's just time for these great myrtles to, you know, they only last some 20, 30 years, and then after that, they just need to.
After the mizan?
It's time to move on.
Time to retire.
So our intention was to make some minor improvements to the park, dress it up a little bit. We also informed neighbors, adjacent neighbors about our project to let them know what's going on and to seek some input. We're doing the same thing here today with our workshop and also at the commission meeting to let the public know what kind of plans we have in mind. And we're obviously asking for some feedback, some ideas, or if people like these plans that we're proposing.
How many benches were you going to add? I saw one.
I think we have two in the plans right now, yes. Three.
Three benches, okay.
Yes, one right next to the handicap parking lots, one right next to the Union Soldier Monument, and then one closer to the McMoRone Library. And then we have like a bench system that goes all the way along to the oak tree. That one stays.
The oak tree?
The oak.
Yes. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on to the other agenda, I wanted to say thank you to the staff members that had to work during this winter storm. I was cozy in a blanket in front of a fire and Fire Department and Police Department and a lot of staff members were having to work. So I just wanted to say thank you, and no, I'm not asking for overtime. I just wanted to thank you very much for keeping our city operating and safe. And I appreciated the weather. We got weather updates frequently from the fire chiefs. That was very helpful to know what was going on. And we got updates from the city manager. Thank you very much for that. All right, moving on to the agenda. I see that the mayor is going to make a proclamation of Black History Month. Generally, February is Black History Month, so it should be no surprise. The warrant list, any questions on the warrant list? No questions on the warrant list? Going once, going twice? The stand-up presentation.
Just a correction there, that presentation actually is going to be under number 11. Okay, so they'll do the presentation, and then that's when you guys can discuss why they're. Yeah, yeah. So we'll take that off under my report, and they will do that discussion.
Under the consent agenda is approval of minutes, sign the mutual aid agreement. What is that again? The mutual aid agreement between?
Naval Station and Fire Department.
Yeah.
Is that for like training? I know some of us talk about training or something.
Some of it's training, some of it is helping them out when they need to be.
Mutual aid agreement with Navy Base is just another tool that we can use if we have a large-scale event. It's all resources. Right now, we have mutual aid for Panama City, Panama City Beach, which are going to be our closest response. So if we do get a tornado, a flood event, it just gives me the resources to call them in for their trucks and manpower and still keep the city safe and still responding to calls.
And Chief, if I'm not mistaken, we did not have one of these in place.
We did not.
And so that's one of the reasons it's on the agenda.
One of the things that was on my agenda when I first came here is to make sure that we have backup so we can still respond to and keep the citizens of the city safe, but have extra manpower to come in to help us if we need it.
So imagine it's the other way, too, where people.
It is. If Panama City needs us, they'll call us. If we have the ability to respond, it gives me the flexibility to say, we're busy in Lynn Haven. I can't respond at this time. Same thing at the beach and the naval station. With the naval station, it gives them the ability to call us if they need our boat at any given time over there by the port and by the naval station. If they have people in the water, we can respond to the boat for life safety and rescue. So it's just another tool, toolbox for us.
And just building relationships and having good partnerships with all our sister cities as well as our military, I think we are doing a really good job with that.
Thank you. Next item, number 10, is to increase the not-to-exceed amount of Tetra Tech FEMA public assistance. Ms. Cindy M. Manager, would you explain number 10, please?
Yes, sure will. As you know, Tetra Tech is our consultant. They are the ones that work on behind the scene to get us as much reimbursement as possible. The whole goal this year, and I think we talked about it a little bit last year, is to try to close out these projects. Close out everything, but seems like when we're getting close, then FEMA comes and says, okay, you need something else, or there may be things that they don't want to cover. So it makes Tetra Tech work harder for us to get us additional funds. And I thought we did really well at managing their funds this past fiscal year. And this fiscal year, we're just going to increase it. We think we can get by with $74,000 to the end of the year. Them working for us. Currently, we've been reimbursed through FEMA for their services, Eligible amount right now is $1.9 million. That eligible amount could increase as FEMA looks at some of our projects and ups that number of what our projects, they will pay out.
So that'll be covered by our FEMA reimbursement?
This, this amount, eligible amount, is $1.9 million. Okay? And so I think right now, we have in there that we have spent $2.6 million. I think that's, that may be in here is with that.
So we've already gone over our limit?
That's exactly right.
So this won't get covered by that?
The only thing I can say, and I can't give you a final answer on that, is that as we add projects or FEMA increase our product, adjust that number. So that's one of the reasons why I want to be really careful saying, right now, that's our eligible amount, but we know that will change because the number in terms of all the projects has already changed. This was just what was in Florida here right now. Okay, and I will keep you informed.
Thank you.
Are they working toward getting the $1 million for the temporary?
Yes, they are.
That's a biggie.
That's a biggie, and that takes a lot of time and paperwork going through, literally. If there's 1,000 pieces of paper, they go through those and validate it. So, and that is so, FEMA won't kick it back.
Any other questions, number 10? Under new business, we're going to have an update on the stormwater assessment. Looking forward to that.
I think you will be pleased. I had a call yesterday with them. I think one of the things that the commission wanted is a lot more time to be able to look at the tiers and stormwater assessment. And I think that this will help us make better decisions. This will be the first year that we are literally adding capital improvements in here. Remember, it's just been operational maintenance, but we've added some capital improvement projects for the next five years. You also gave us instruction, thank you Commissioner Peebles, to look at different tiers. They're doing that in a couple of different scenarios. And so when they come on Tuesday, they will present and let you have that information. It won't be anything you have to vote on, but surely you'll want to ask them questions and discuss them on yourselves, and then give us any recommendations so that we can go back and make any changes for you.
So their presentation will be during the meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Comments?
Looking forward to it.
All right, number 11 is under old business, and it's the final reading of ordinance 1173. Is Amy on the line?
This is, actually, Mr. Cole is on the line, but Jennifer can speak to that.
Okay, just a reminder what this is, Jennifer.
Both 12 and 13 are the same. They're just dealing with different pensions. Our law enforcement pension, our police pension, and our firefighter pension. Both of those pensions have a second retirement plan called the share plan, which is provided through the state. When our pensions accepted the ordinance to allow vesting at 50% up to 100%, they wanted to clarify those two pensions, that the share plan required 10 years for 100% vesting before there would be a distribution to those who retired. So this just clarifies that and provides that security to that secondary retirement plan.
I'm good.
You good, Sam? Pat, you good? Well, that's, oh, I have to turn the page.
Tricked you.
Yeah, the final reading on ordinance and number 14, ordinance 1175, small scale, future land use map. This is the one on 23.
2321.
2321, I knew it was 23, yeah, that's okay.
Right near Deer Point, I'm going to behind our park there.
Yeah. Any, any additional information do we need on that?
I wanted to let you know that there will be a presentation, because it's a public hearing. So there'll be a presentation on Tuesday. So you know, you had questions about any houses being adjacent?
Yes.
There will be a slide showing the aerial map on the presentation so we can clearly see where any residential is. And I've also put in your packets the table of allowable uses per land use so you can look to see what would be currently allowed under TND compared to what would be allowed under commercial. And there are a few things that will be allowed under commercial that wouldn't be allowed under TND. There are only a few, I can tell you what they are now if you like.
Please.
Okay. So boarding homes, boat ramps or docks, colleges, these are all things that are allowed in commercial, but not in TND. Auto repair is allowed in commercial, alcoholic beverage establishments, automotive parts and mechanical garages, gas service stations, landscape nurseries, large-scale discount stores. So things like Dollar Generals and those kinds of things. Also, motorized vehicles, sales are allowed in some areas in commercial. We don't allow them broadly across the city in commercial. We just have a designated area where they're allowed. So they would be allowed up there, and parking lots.
Questions on the final reading?
Have they said what they plan on putting there, or it's just simply?
I have not spoken to, I've only, I haven't spoken to John David. I've only spoken to the engineers who submitted this. I don't know what is going on there. We're not supposed to look at what is going on there. We're only supposed to look at all the allowable uses that could go on there, because even if someone says they're going to do something, they could sell it. They could not do it, they could sell it. So to be safe, the best thing is to look at all of the allowable uses that could possibly go on there in the future if you change it.
Okay.
Any other items the commission would like to discuss, Pat?
I don't know if we should, but you guys have been getting the emails about Casper Del Mar.
Yep.
So it was, went to the planning board.
Yeah.
And where the neighborhood is getting hard before the horse. It's not on our agenda yet.
But I know, that was going to be my question, is there a reason it's not on the agenda?
Yeah.
Yes. It wasn't come to you for this agenda. However, because of all the controversy about that little tiny piece of a parcel that they bought so that they could, because they already legally have access from Casper Mara across our right-of-way to access that parcel. However, it's not big enough access to have a driveway. You could have like a pedestrian access, a pathway, but it wasn't big enough for a driveway. So that's why they went and bought that piece, small piece of land from that property owner because they wanted to have that emergency access. And then also, if a single-family home gets built eventually on that, there's a piece that they own that isn't part of the project, then they might have wanted access there. But because that was what the homeowners association was so angry about and got the attorney about, involved in, they decided, because their attorney had said that there was possibly, even though we could legally, within our rights, go ahead and issue the development order, it could make things tricky, it could make things drag on. And so they decided to deed that, they're taking it off. They're giving it back to the original property owner. So they are deeding that piece, that small piece, back to the original property owner. So that's been going on, which means that that property owner now has to amalgamate those two parcels into one parcel again, and it goes back to Casper Mara, their plan is fine. And then also, there were a couple of utility questions that we need to get eyeed out, and with Bobby being away, Chris being away, we didn't have time to get that already. So we don't obviously want to bring it to you until all the Ts have been crossed and the Is have been dotted. So we decided to wait until next month.
So it's still just one entrance in and out?
Yes, ma'am, yeah. On Grass Point, they've, the county has given them their access permits. The county, they've been to the county, the county's fine with it. And it actually turns out that the county had issued a development order for an RV park on Grassy, on that road. I don't know, last year, year before, a couple of years ago, but at some point in time, they did issue a development order for an RV park that had more, many more units than this development. But the people could not develop the RV park because they would have had to raise, it was so low, I think it was a lot of wetlands or something. So the county, they've got their permits from the county for that road, so the county's fine with it.
So if I understand it right, they're not going to be able to connect with that HOA now?
Not in the driveway, but like I said, they do legally, per Bobby, have access because it is, it's not a private road, it's public right-of-way. So there is right-of-way there. So if they wanted to put like a sidewalk pedestrian gate or a pedestrian thing in, then there's enough room for that. But there is not enough room, they don't have enough land there because of the way the cul-de-sac is shaped to have a vehicle entrance and exit.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I had several communications referring to the water and sewage issues there.
That's why it hasn't come back, because they are, they're, like I said, utility questions that need to be sorted, and we weren't able to do it because of the weather and people being out of town. So otherwise, it would have come to you, it would have been sorted by now, I'm sure. But it hasn't been, so I don't know if Chris wants to speak on that at all, being utilities.
Our utility issues, the water, there is a little bit of water issues. So for fire protection, they would be required to put a sprinkler system in all the buildings to meet the fire codes that we require. And then the sewer issue, when they ran the model, they said that the station 41 doesn't have adequate capacity, which we don't feel that is a problem. The station 41 has no capacity issues there to put this development into that lift station on Casper Mara. However, the lift station 47 that it pumps to would possibly require some modifications. So that's what we've got to get together on of the station 47, not the station 41 that's in Casper Mara, or on Casper Mara.
Where's 47 at?
At the foot of the bridge there, behind the sign.
So they're going to feed to that?
Correct.
Not to 41?
Well, it goes to 41.
And then it goes.
41 pumps to 47, and 47 pumps to the wastewater plant.
I'm going to be that job, figuring all that out.
Any other issues?
Well, that's all I had, I just, well, I was wondering where we're at with the county and the wastewater plant, getting any headway or meetings set or anything with them.
Yeah, we had a meeting set on Thursday, but as you know, county was closed on Thursday, so we couldn't have that meeting at all. And CJ is working with their people to try to reschedule that meeting.
They've just come back this morning to say it looks like February 3rd.
February 3rd will be the meeting. We are, just so you know, we have our teeth in it. We're not going to let go of that, okay? So it's just a matter of pulling everyone together, getting all the information, and this is absolutely a process.
Sam, you have any issues?
You guys covered most of them. But the one thing I wanted to ask all of you is if you had given any more thought to potentially adding items to the ballot? Or questions? Because we're running up on a deadline here for that.
Yes.
What was the, when did we decide?
The 14, I just, we just need those, and I think I sent you kind of the form. The question has to be, it's a certain way the question has to be asked. And so if you're thinking about it, you can send them to me, and I can kind of rework it and ask Nina, you know, is this good? Would this be clear? And of course, I just gave you some information about what she, her concerns were to ensure that, you know, once you get these non-binding referenda items on there, and then you find out you have additional information after you do it, and you go the opposite of what people say, then you definitely have a PR nightmare, Mayor. Great, I think it's a great idea. We just have to have questions where we feel like the voters are informed. That was her suggestion to me.
Yeah, definitely. You don't want to, you wouldn't want to be like, hey, does this sound fun? You have to be like, hey, does this sound fun, but you also have to pay for it?
So you're right.
Like what questions?
I've been thinking about it, and the big thing is. I've been thinking about it, and the big thing is, you gotta be, there's certain questions, even though you'd like to get feedback on, wouldn't be good questions because they're not necessarily yes or no. There's, there could be a lot of caveats to it, you know? I know you had talked about the accessory structures and the RVs. I don't know if even that would be good because there's so much ambiguity and. I don't know if it's a definitive yes or no, but yeah, I've been thinking about it.
You do, just a moment.
Could you bump that in my email, just to make it easier to find the template?
I'll send it to all of you, I'll resend that again.
But I do think it's a good idea.
Well, if we think it's a good idea, we need to get serious about it, because the clock's ticking for the ballot.
Very important.
Yeah.
Any other issues, Jamie?
No, Mr. Pernell brought up what I wanted to bring up, so good.
The city manager, you have any?
Yes, ma'am, just a few things. First of all, thank you to every staff. All leadership team did work during this time, they're just working in a safe place. And Mark and I were on several EOC calls, calls. The latest one was always at 11 o'clock, of course, when everything, we kind of assessed everything. The county was very helpful in some sense. But as all of us said, you know, we're not equipped for fresh storms here in the south. But our staff, we took care of Lynn Haven. We got together, got staff out, Bobby was out, Chris was out. So Danny came in and pulled together not only public works, but I will tell you how much staff love the city. Charles, who is our building official, was out there, you know, shoving snow, moving barricades, Ty's guys, Joe's guys. So it didn't matter what department you worked in, it's just that we just got it done. And our whole goal when we were doing that was that we didn't know when FDOT was going to clear 77. I talked to Secretary Gaynor, and of course, as you know, he was having some massive problems on I-10, even getting equipment to clear I-10, and that is one of the reasons it closed, because they just didn't have the equipment to be able to push snow, put salt down, all of those things. But I will tell you, for us, we were pre-planning since probably a week before this storm came in, putting down sand in those very critical areas that we knew people might try to travel, which some did. We did have some crashes, we did have some calls, an increased amount of calls. And then when it got unsafe, our police and first responders, they were pulled in. They did a very great job. I think all staff did a great job in their respective places. I think so also pushing out information. EOC wanted us to be very concerted in our efforts and saying the same message. I think that helped a lot in just keeping you all informed from those meetings and what we were doing. I thought that, you know, that was very important in case citizens were reaching out to you. But this staff, everyone, played a part in pulling together and getting some of those streets cleared, kind of made a quadrant, so we know the streets that people would travel. Because we were really stressing to stay off 77, it was slick, it still had ice on it, all of those things. And then we were on several phone calls where we continued to push 77 being cleared. And Secretary Gaynor and Keith Bryant made that happen, or it's called the contractor. And they clears much of it, 77. And as you can see, there's still piles of snow in some areas, but a great job from the staff and just working together to make things happen for the city. And then lastly, I don't know if you guys have gotten calls from anyone that live near the industrial park or emails from them, and they don't actually live in the city, they are county residents. But I did speak with that person and a couple of others. You know, the new vendor that's coming in, tenant that's coming in, IAG, is gonna bring about 104 jobs to the city on Haven, and then about 500 jobs to Bay County. And they probably saw this company moving in those big, you know, parts of aviation. It's, they're huge, they're taking over ACT, ACMT building, and that's gonna be huge for us. I know it was really important to each of us that our industrial park continued to thrive, and it is. We don't see that closing with that particular tenant coming in, and then a tenant that took over the Sally Mae building. I think, you know, we're well on our way to having a great industrial park, which surely makes the tenants that are already there breathe a little sigh of relief. And so I just wanted to give you an update on that. There'll probably be a time that we will have probably some type of little press to welcome them and introduce them here. It has not been official, you know, official, they're coming out of IAG, but they are gonna be a great company, well-funded, and big, huge contracts that they'll be here for a while. So I wanted to let you know. So if you get any complaints about increased traffic, that's because they're bringing in these huge pieces of aviation parts and equipment to get started.
So mainly the complaints were on the traffic?
Yes. From what I understand, IAG is supposed to be doing similar work to what ACMT was doing.
It is, it's very, very similar, but more robust, and them having the funding to actually do it.
Did they determine what they're gonna do with Sally Mae yet?
We still have that person who brought, I think it's Mr., what's his first name?
Little. Steve Little.
Yeah, he, right now, we have not gotten what he's gonna be doing with that project.
Which is the one that's adjacent to the LBB property that had all that parking? Do you remember when Mr. Al?
Sally Mae.
Okay, so we, my office has been contacted by somebody who wants to break off that big parking lot that's adjacent to the LBB property, wants to lease it from the owner, get a new parcel number on it. So we've been looking into this, and what they want to do is they, basically they're gonna turn that park, it would have to come to you for a development order. They want to, they're calling in some kind of data, something, thing. It is this new technology again. So they basically want to turn that parking lot into a solar, it's just gonna be covered with solar panels. And they're collecting the energy for data processing or something. So we just had a conceptual sent to us end of last week, I think it was, for us to get our preliminary comments back to them. But just to kind of let you know, that is what, we haven't sent any comments back, so not everybody's looked at it yet. But it's industrial land use up there, and high-tech industries or whatever are allowed. But on our code, it does say like water-based, water dependent, this isn't anything to do with water. But I think this is kind of, this is the second time we've heard about something like this. The Marina Island people were talking about something like this. So just to let you know, when you were asking what was gonna be done, we don't know, but somebody is talking about that.
So we do have some really, really good things that will be going on in the industrial park. I'm sorry, that's all, follow me. But I just wanted to keep you informed on an industrial park, because I know, as commission, you should be concerned, and we all should, about keeping that park there. And, you know, our biggest complaint has been, you know, traffic. And it will be more traffic is where I'm going, once you start to have people that start working there. Okay?
Especially if it's 500 to 1,000 people.
Well, we will get about 104 of those. And then they will also have some over in the airport area, I think about 500 there.
But that Sally Mae building, when it was full up and running, I forget how many people they had there. Because I don't know if you've ever been in there, but it's a big call center.
Yeah.
And I want to say they had 800,000 people.
It was a lot of people.
I mean, a lot of jobs.
A lot of loans.
Yeah, wow. Well, Sally Mae was, yeah.
I do want to thank Wayne Lindsey for bringing food to first responders and other folks while they were out working. He always does that. Sunny's barbecue. He always does that. Takes care of our guys.
One thing, you know, I look at the police reports that we get, you know? And I'm alarmed about the domestic violence. I mean, it's between partners, it's between children and parents, it's between non-friends or friends. You know, I don't know what the solution is, well, I do know what the solution is. But I, I'm just, I just wanted to make a comment that I read those twice a day, and without fail, there's always, sometimes it's all domestic violence. And so that takes time of our police officers, when they could be patrolling and keeping crime down. You know, crime actually in Lynn Haven is not the issue, it seems, it's domestic violence. And it occurs, you know, in parking lots, at restaurants, everywhere, it's just.
Yeah, it's across the nation, unfortunately.
Yeah.
I would imagine COVID probably didn't help everybody huddled up together in the houses and that, I'm sure that.
Too much closeness.
Yeah, you know.
And you'll see a lot of more, you know, it seems to be mental illness, you see a lot of Baker acts.
Yeah, true.
So PD, you can just kind of see some of the things that they're dealing with besides all of the other items that are out there keeping our city safe. And then you did receive the email about our PD being re-accredited.
Oh, yes, I meant to mention that, yeah. Congratulations.
It's great.
Yeah, I actually read that. Bullets, it referred to bullets.
Of all the things that I feel like, when you took, when you got voted into office, what the information you get every day on the police reports and whatnot, it's mentally aging yourself to read it, you know, because it disturbs you in a way, you know? And you can't get out there and fix it. And it's, these guys are out there every day dealing with that, every single day. It's a credit to them, but it's also, it's what lets age on them too, and what gives them issues in their lives, you know? Because you just, you just can't unsee that or unfeel it when you, we're just reading it, they're living it.
True.
And it has an effect on me, you know, all the time, because it just, you know, you just sit there, and just like them, you could be in a great mood, you pick that, pick up the phone and read that, and you're like, yeah. For them to actually be on scene and dealing with that stuff, it's amazing.
Well, thank you to the police department and the fire department for the sacrifices that they make and the problems that they encounter. Any other issues? If not, say 47 immediately.